Maybe ask Councilor Bagary to start it, thank you.
Our Father in Heaven, as we bow our heads before the is, administration to the town of Carson, we are indeed thankful for the privilege we have of serving our community. We are thankful that we live in an area of peace and quiet and tranquility. We do resolve that we have problems, but nothing like is being experienced throughout the world. We ask that as we discuss our problems in our community, the Spirit will be with us so we'll be led and guided and directed. And we pray for those who have reason to mourn for losses or for other purposes. And these things we ask for humbly in the name of thy Son Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen.
All right, welcome council. We go ahead and call a meeting to order and we'll welcome our media. Mr. McCarthy with Channel... Are we calling you still Channel 32? Is that still?
Channel 4.
Channel 4?
Channel 4 me.
That's 4 me.
Right, yeah, Channel 4 for a lot of Shaw users.
Big customers.
That's fantastic. Thank you, Councilor Bagary, for that prayer. We'll go ahead and take a look at the agenda as presented. There are no proposed changes, so we're looking for a motion to accept.
Jeremy coming up there?
Thank you.
It'd be the Spirit.
Oh, yeah, yeah, I'll maybe mention that, but we'll take this motion. Which was to pass the agenda. All those in favor? Thank you. Yeah, we did receive word from Jeremy that he might be just a little late, so we told him we'd conduct as much business as we could before he got here, and then we paused, hear his delegation, and then move forward. He's got another delegation with the school at this exact moment, so that's fine. We'll move then to adoption of the CCW minutes from September 5th. Councilor Bagary?
Councilor Moore?
Thank you. Any thoughts, amendments, adjustments, concerns? We'll go ahead and ask all those in favor. And if they passed, thank you. Jumping now to 7A. Now, some of the information in our packet today is for information purposes. This is kind of an interesting look at the term of this council. We, of course, don't have 2017 numbers yet, but if we take the three or four year ends that we've been a part of, held the line on taxes, reduced our debt, increased our reserves.
Exactly.
If there's any other way we could have been financially amazing, somebody didn't tell us, because we did a great job. But we'll go ahead, Mayor.
Jeff, can you remind us what the debt consists of? There is still a small portion that is the outflow line.
That whole number there is the outfall.
That's majority of the debt.
That's all of that. Now, in 2017, you took on that NMAX debt.
Right.
So again, not reflected here.
About 200.
Yeah, it was just under 198?
198.
Something like that?
198, 199.
But yes, that's completely the outfall line.
Okay.
So that'll jump up for the next term. Yeah. Or that, but it's not indicated on here. No, I just took everything off of audited financial statements, and so I don't have them for another six months.
Thanks.
Councilor Barnes?
Yeah, just in that regard on that debt, how's that outfall line working now? Did they get those leaks fixed? Or we still have a problem there?
Yes and maybe. Yes, everything that has been leaking is fixed, and we're not experiencing the frequency. There is some concern that the issue that's gone on for the last couple of years has weakened certain sections, but we don't really have a way to evaluate that, to analyze it. So, but we're... It's been quiet for a little while. We haven't fixed anything for a little while. So it seems to have fixed what was happening, because we're not getting the frequency of issues we were.
We'll go to Councilor Bagary, then the mayor.
Jeff, with the outfall line, is there a rider on our sewer?
Um, I'd have to grab... I don't think there is on the utility bill.
I don't think we've put a rider on it, but I just wonder if...
No, I don't think we have any right now.
Councilor... The mayor?
The question I have for you, Jeff, is to understand how the problems that we had occurred and a cost to the town is being looked after by the engineering firm and their insurance possibly.
So right now, they have not agreed to that. We're still watching to see what happens here, but they're not... They've rectified the issue without any costs?
Okay.
This is where we're at, so they haven't charged us anything for being on site, for programming, for doing any of that. But at this point, we're probably $40,000 into it. That's probably where we're at to fix it.
I think, another question then, and that was, why is there no liability there? To me, I mean, there's faulty materials.
No, the materials weren't faulty. The materials weren't faulty. It was due to a vacuum that was being... Again, the working theory right now is that the pump shutting off and then the water flowing back was creating a vacuum which over the years weakened the material. But we actually worked with the manufacturer, sent them pipe samples and everything, and they concluded that the material was not faulty. And that it was an ex... You could make an argument, which we still are working on that argument, that there was a design flaw, that the vacuum should have been, could have been anticipated.
Right.
You could make that argument. But right now, we're just waiting to see, because we have had one leak since we changed the pumps. We did have another one leak since then. So we're just kind of waiting to see where this goes. No one's washed their hands of anything yet. StanTech's been great. They're definitely at the table. We're just waiting to see if this actually does curb it. It seems to slow it down. Again, knock on wood. Things have been quiet for probably a month, which has been good.
Thank you.
Jeff, with that in mind, are they putting in backflow preventer valves?
Well, the pumps now don't have a hard start and hard shut-off. So they're on variable frequency drives now. So that's supposed to fix it.
Now, it was mentioned that a year, a couple of years ago, some abbreviated charts of statements similar to this chart that we have here were made available to the public to just kind of answer any questions that they had. And is there any appetite of this council to maybe release this information to the public, let them know kind of where we've been going the last term? Yes, Councilor?
Before we just answer that, I was wondering on the reserve, is that dedicated reserves or is that unrestricted reserves?
Both.
All, totally.
Everything. Yeah, it's both. That's total reserves. Now, you don't have too many unrestricted reserves.
That's not accounted for, going to be used for something.
Yeah, we don't have too many of those anyway.
Okay.
That'd be pretty small.
So Barfis and then Councilor Mayor?
So just by the nature that we've discussed this, this is in the public realm. So the question really is, are we going to actively promote it, because it is a public document now?
Sure, sure.
And I think we should.
I'm of the same opinion, for the good reason that that chart shows something very interesting. If you're able to hold the tax at the same level over four years, but if at the same time you're capable of increasing your reserve, decreasing your debt, there has been efficiency found in the system. And administration has worked with us to increase efficiency through the system. And that's a good news story that should be told. It was a joint effort between all the departments and the budgeting ability, which obviously has been refined, and administration, the finance department, and our self-making decisions. I think it's a good news story. And good news, you can never have enough to tell the public.
I'm happy to entertain a recommendation.
Okay, just one other comment there. Now, this was just a self-generated within our town that you put together?
I just put this together. I was looking for some other numbers, and I thought, I wonder how that's gone over the four years? Well, I was already in the statements, and so I just put this together in about 10 minutes.
Okay, because I know sometimes we've had a whole raft of financial indicator graphs.
From the problems. Yeah. Definitely can... They're all electronic now. You generate them yourselves, but yes, I could produce all those too.
Because I mean, there's another... I mean, I guess the one thing that we didn't show on here was where did we get our revenue? And probably the utilities that we increased over the four years. It'd be interesting to see that, but...
Yeah, that could be added and see what that looks like. Again, I just grabbed some key numbers there for information.
Councilor?
I'd suggest, Councilor Creed, that we don't muddy the waters.
You want the good story?
Well, no, but if you start adding all these other graphs and stuff like that, it, you know, it basically muddies the waters if they don't understand.
I mean, the full picture really is whether it's my left pocket or my right pocket.
That's right.
You start taking it out of my pocket.
Exactly.
And so we have increased revenues. Yep. And I don't think anybody in town is working under the misunderstanding that their utility bills haven't gone up. But yeah, I think in some ways it would be nice to have total revenues on there so that you could kind of see that, but I don't know how you would do that without making it messy.
Well, is there a recommendation maybe to have administration draw up something? Yes, Mayor?
I would put a recommendation to council that administration draw a small article regarding the state of the revenues, reserve, taxes, debt over the past four years.
Or is it like on the website or?
Could be released. Whichever administration fill could be the most useful, could be the website. It's fine. It's difficult to put that really in color in a newspaper, but...
Yeah, and just for clarification, if I may...
Could be on a chapter.
Probably don't need that recommendation. Come before council next week. You just take that today and run with it. You don't need a resolution.
Well, I can bring the article back for council for next week. What the numbers look like.
That's fine. Thank you. All those in favor? Thank you. All right. With no further questions on 7A, we'll move down to 7B. These are the pool stats as calculated. We don't anticipate any more expenses or revenues, so this is what it's going to look like. Yeah.
Jeff, help me understand, if you don't mind me asking, Jeff. Help me understand the difference between 2016 and 2017, where our revenues have gone down overall with 61% recovery, which is great. Last year, we were about 64 points, something. Help me understand why salaries have gone up, revenues down somewhat, and we had a fantastic summer. So help me figure it out.
I can't point to a specific metric, because we didn't track our memberships and our past submissions last year. So I couldn't tell you the numbers were up or down. I just don't know.
Okay.
So that's something going forward. We have much better metric for, but I couldn't tell you how it compares. Obviously, by revenue, it's down.
Yeah, and the salary went up, but then I realized we had to do adjustment for the different rates.
Minimum wage was up this year.
Minimum wage, so I realized that was an impact.
And that was only $5,000 over the whole summer, so...
So I really...
Yeah, I wish I could point to a number and say we sold 30 less family passes.
Right.
But I don't know. We don't know that number, because we didn't track it like we did this year. With the admission system, we were able to track even rush swim. I don't think it's... I think there's a margin of error in the rush swim as an aside, but it gives us a relative idea. Family passes, of course, are accurate, because there's more to that.
I mean, there's no doubt the 61% recovery is probably the best we can do.
That would be enviable to most seasonal years.
Yes, I would say so. But I just was curious at the description.
I mean, to give you an example, I know Raymond Sterling are striving for 45% recovery. That's the goal.
Yeah, I mean, we don't know where.
So I'm happy with that for sure.
Okay, thanks.
But next year, we can have a really good look at family passes and rush swim meant.
Okay, thanks.
Well, correct me if I'm wrong, but didn't we approve that extra lifeguard for the pool slide and stuff?
Yeah, we might have had one additional.
Yeah, so that could have reflected there.
I'd have to look at that for sure.
Was the minimum wage increase was after the fact?
Well, and knowing the minimum wage goes up this month again, doesn't it?
Just this week.
The first I'll probably go with.
So... Is it this week or just... We have to see just how it is right now.
So it'll be up against another...
Sunday, yeah.
That's another 11% or 12% next year, so...
All right, but regardless, it's quite good.
So at least for your information.
Yeah, do we also track like the days and hours of operation? You know, like on some weather conditions, you know, we will shut it down or something like that. I think we had a good summer, but I'm just wondering if we track?
Number of open days?
Number of open days.
Now, I shouldn't say that Shem couldn't pull it off, because it's all data-based, and chances are every time they enter that rush swim, it's timestamped. So I won't say it couldn't be done. But I don't know that he set it up to readily report it, but my guess is, because they would... Like, for example, when my kids went, their pass was scanned. It was barcode and scanned, so there's probably a timestamp of every time they went. I know he can see like, and I didn't want to report this here, but he can see who got the most value out of their swim passes in the year. You know, he can see this family used it over the times, and this was four. So we can look at that, but I don't know. I'm not sure, Councilor.
Yeah, so just as a question, on those closure days, if we have to have a closure, do we save wages on those days, or are the staff paid the same?
No, they don't come in.
So they're paid hourly by the days?
Only in the event of a thunderstorm or something.
Yeah, they might be there, and then they'll clean up, and then they're still there for a couple of hours.
Yeah. I'm just trying to...
I don't think we had any days that we were just closed from open till shut, not that I recall.
Okay. Well, I guess this was a pretty good summer, so I don't think we had any.
Well, we had a couple of lightning days. I know I went to a rental, and we had lightning. We're only in for 10 minutes, but I don't recall any full days that we were down.
Oh, this is nice. Yeah, it was a good summer.
Did the ash cause any problems to the pool?
You know, I don't know. I didn't ask Doug. There was a short window there where it was... It may actually... They might have had it drained and refilled by then, so that issue may still be yet to come.
Yeah.
Well, sand filters are kind of like a shop vac, you know, like it doesn't really, oh, gum up a filter. It just goes into the sand. And then they backwash that and it gets all mixed up. So hopefully, hopefully no adverse effects.
Yeah.
But it's true, there were many days where the air quality was so poor that maybe the attendance was not as well.
Could have been, could have been, yeah.
Could have been an effect.
So just again, for your information.
Yeah, 7B was there. If there's no further questions on that, we'll move to 7C, which is not in our digital packet.
No.
It's the... We have a little stack of papers. We'll turn some time over to Jeff. Oh, it's digital up here.
Yeah, it'll be up here. And so what I was going to show you is we've had a couple of things finally culminate, and they were goals of this council. One was the infrastructure master plan. And we also did a roads report, so I wanted to just take a few minutes here. And I did not put all 107 pages on the overhead, by the way. I just, I'm just going to show you 10...
Obdue to the language.
And by the way, these things are so big and so small, you're going to wonder what you can even see of them, but bear with me.
Oh, I love that.
Hold on, I'll deal with that. Just give me a second. So I'm going to turn the slide off too. So I was really pleased, although it took way longer than we wanted, I was pleased with what came out of the infrastructure master plan and how we can use it for planning. So what I wanted to show you is generally what the deliverable is and how we'll use it. Now, don't... You don't need to read all this, but it starts with a five-page executive summary that breaks down water, sewer, and storm, those three categories. And so what Albert and Talbera did is they... We had the luxury this time around, which was superior to the last time we did one, is that Brandon was able to model volumes and model things all throughout the year, so we didn't just have to pick a point in time to base all the flows and all that stuff on. So Brandon has been... We have flow monitors he can put in the sewer lines. And so all throughout, for about two years, he went all through different parts of town and modeled flows in wet weather and dry weather. So we have an indication of our wet weather flows and our dry weather flows.
Was that like in sanitary sewers?
Yeah, sanitary and storm.
So it kind of gives us an idea of infiltration?
Yeah, exactly. Yeah, which I'll lead into a large project that we're going to propose in the budget next year with the sanitary infiltration, well, storm infiltration in the sanitary, to be correct. So we had better data this time around on that, which was a good thing. So what they started off is, I just want to show you there's a couple of big numbers in here that are very summary, because they get into excruciating detail later on. But on water, for example, they talked about, here's some things. There's a booster pump station and pipe loop upgrade that needs to be done and pipe upgrades. And we have a whole bunch of charts on upgrading them based on pipe material and based on condition and based on all kinds of things.
And are these dated, like within 10 years, or five?
Yeah, it's a 20-year total spreadsheet.
Right, okay.
Yeah, is what it is. So he was just giving bulk numbers here. If we wanted to go upgrade every pipe in town right now, you need $6.174 million to do it. So it looks like that's obviously a huge number, and we're doing a good job of picking away at it. The other thing is, when we did an infrastructure master plan in '09, we've been able to integrate all the improvements we've made since '09 into the new modeling of the 2017. So we have very current information. Then you get into, for example, some of the just good numbers we have is we have a residential sewage generation date per day. We have a non-residential sewer generation rate, effective infiltration and inflow, industrial and commercial inflow. We have these new numbers now based on the fact we could monitor over a period of time to get our estimates better. And what you'll see, I'll show you here, is they were able to do some really neat like fire flow estimates based on use, and I'll show that here in a minute.
Sorry, just some...
Okay, sorry, Councilor, I'm sorry.
So if I'm to understand that number correctly, we're getting 10 times the non-residential sewer generation?
Yeah, how they got that number is we took our total water, total water consumption, and we backed out all of what we considered big users, according to NMAX statistics, and then just divided that by the number of users. So it is an average overall. What was our cutoff? Joe, you and I talked about this before. Do you remember what number we used? What we considered a large user and what we considered a regular? Because we averaged all the regulars in and all the larges in. Was it a three meters? Was it a meter a day?
That's... I don't remember.
No, it would have been more than that. I think it was three meters a day or something. We had a cutoff where Albert said, give me everybody above this threshold and everybody below. Because his concern was, is he didn't want to use average per household water consumption and sewer discharge when you were factoring in huge users and skewing the number. So the attempt was to try and back out some of the big users and then deal with them separately. Because we don't have 1,300 residential users, so to take a high average and multiply it over that many, it was going to skew the total gross. I think we have a pretty decent number. Councilor Bagary?
Jeff, does this infrastructure master plan, will it include the county loop to Aetna and the South Co-op Waterline?
So it includes a couple of improvements to increase capacity on the water plant. Now, it just helps that Albert's the engineer on the Leavitt Mountain View Water Line for the county, who also did our infrastructure master plan. So he has, and I'll show you if we get, I think I put it in here. He has a couple of upgrades on the plant to extend the life and increase capacity based on perceived demand that way. So that's... Now, we had to take a bit of a stab at a number. The county's going to pay him to figure out exactly what that number's going to look like through their study. But that's still early on, so... Again, just that was a bit of a number. He went through sanitary sewer. So there's about four projects that are totaling $3.6 million. Northeast lift station, North trunk twinning, northeast trunk, northwest lift station. These are just kind of major things that are higher priorities, and I'll get into one of them a little bit later. I was just trying to show you that through the executive summary, he talked about a couple of big projects that we should be aware of on the horizon. But then within the report, there's just a... It's very detailed on everything. So what we have, and I know you can't see the streets, and I get that, but you understand what we're looking at. This was simply defining the study area and then considering the build-out of the east and west area structure plans. Is all that showing. So there's a couple of pieces I didn't put in this, but showing where the mains should run and connect into for those area structure plans and a few things like that. So that was just the study area. This one is, and again, there are all those little numbers you see in there or can't see are just what they call nodes. They're just junction points for reference. So if there's an issue at J27, you can see where it is on the map, for example. What this map did is now this map shows every water line in town and what it's made out of. So it shows us which ones are cast, which ones are PVC, which ones are asbestos cement, which one... So, and on and on. And so it gives us an idea when we start looking at priority based on material type, where those are at a visual glance, and what we can do with those. Councilor Bagary?
This also shows the Ellison Development and the Atkins Development.
So they're already... Well, actually, you can see that right there. There's Atkins Sewer Main right there.
Okay.
Um, oh, sorry, I'm telling you a lie. That's Ellison's.
That's Ellison.
Atkins, sorry, is here, but runs into this, so it doesn't show the main, but it runs in right there.
It's all connected now, isn't it?
Yeah, it is. Yeah, sorry, that was Ellison's, not Atkins'.
So we have taken ownership of that now?
Uh, not yet.
Okay.
No, but it's connected. So that just shows existing water based on material, and then we also did, Albert also did another map. Oh, let me go back. Oh, yeah, I skipped over one here. This first one is actually the pipe, water pipe based on size. So it's every pipe, main, water main, the ground based on size. And then the next one was every pipe based on material. So we can start to prioritize, and where the sizing comes into play is on this map. That, which looks like a spider was smashed on the overhead, isn't the case at all. What it is is that is showing fire flows in the town. And so when we're looking at how the impact of putting a new main size in, it will impact the modeling for fire flows. And I recognize you can't see it very well, but it's actually high pressure to low going from the center of town and out. Simply because, as we know, the center of town has gravity feed and has high pressure.
Yeah.
It's down in a hole. And so it kind of goes outward for decreasing fire flow pressure. And this one was kind of interesting, because what they did is they modeled it with, in a day where our maximum day usage would be being used, plus the need for fire flow, what would the pressure look like? So if it's a hot July afternoon, and we're using a lot of water anyway, and then we have a great need for fire flows, what's our pressure? And so again, within that map, there's all these little nodes, J170, J178, and so on. And those become relevant when you get into these. So every map has an accompanying table that says, all right, looking forward to improve your fire flows. From J81 to J82, there's 200 meters of line. Or you should upgrade it to 200 millimeters, sorry. And it's, well, in this case, it's actually 200 meters long. So then he made recommendations of, okay, between J82 and J262, you need to upgrade to 200 mil for 74 meters.
And is this gradually being done?
Well, we've, yeah, we're... The 2009, we followed fairly closely, and so this is a continuation. For example, when we replaced the water lines in Second Avenue East, Second Street East, sorry, Second Street East, those were replaced to increase fire flows over by the State Center and the Junior High. That's why that was upgraded, was because we didn't have good fire pressure, fire flow, I should say. Pressure's a bit of a different monster, but fire flow into that corner of town, Soccer Field, Junior High, State Center, that area. So that one was simply replaced so that there could be a higher volume of water at the exit line.
So Jeff, that map that had what looked like contour lines on there?
Yeah.
That's, was that... It's not physical contour line, but it's kind of based on the size and the length of pipes to those areas?
It is based on the pressure of the hydrant at that location.
Oh, okay.
So they tested the pressure on the fire hydrants and said, okay, we're finding that, and they were grouped fairly well.
Is like static pressure or flow or pressure when it's flowing?
No, I think it's just tested statically on the hydrant at that point.
Okay.
I think. So again, I know you can't see this, but that legend over there says...
Well, if I'm reading it right, all those dark red in the middle have good pressure.
Yeah, they're high pressure.
The purple is starting to fade. This orange is a little bit weaker, the blue, which you see two spots of blue right here. That's really kind of maybe needs some addressing.
Yeah, yeah, so it goes basically by PSI from 40 to 130.
Okay.
And categorizes it, I think this is the one here. Yeah, this is the one here. So for example, the red in the middle is, fire flows is about 230 liters per second, for example. But if you get out on the blue, as you can see on the far right, that is 60 liters per second.
And if we're going to do the east structure plan, we need to do some...
Right, so there'd have to be a lot of considerations for how do we, if we're going to have dense development over there, how do we get fire protection, fire flows to a higher level, right? So again, this is just showing you what all the things that they considered in the plan to base what, how we should invest.
That's a tremendous chart when you consider tangible... That's a tremendous chart when you consider tangible capital assets management.
The nodes and all the lines stem from that, because we had to inventory that all at one time. So then we had a base to work from. Right, yeah, for sure. So we know that, we know the size and we know the material of every sewer and water line in town. We still find some surprises, I should just cave in. Like the wood sewer line we dug up on Town Square. That was odd, but, yeah, so there's still, when you get twelve feet underground, there's surprises. So that's a fire flow and then it gets into this, okay, here's some, here's some things you can look at to upgrade to a different millimeter pipe for this length. And, and that will improve the flows. So this one, and I don't expect you to memorize what this one looks like, but that's what it's modeled after all those improvements.
Oh.
Okay, so and that, actually, for some reason, I want to talk to Albert, the key, the color code is different than two ago. So like on this one, blue was the low one, but on this one, it's up a couple, anyway. Doesn't, doesn't really matter.
Different colors.
But the point is he's able to model it and say, okay, if you do these improvements, this will give you some indication of your fire flow with improvements. And to get into those areas. So that was kind of a neat, neat idea to give us a way to prioritize water capital investment. So between condition or material, the type of material and size for fire flow, we can use those two things. So moving on from fire. Oh man, this thing jumps around. This one is again, a bit of a schmooze to look at, but what this is, is this is sewer lines, all the sewer mains. And this is the dry weather flows. There's little numbers that correlate, so that's what Brandon was monitoring. Okay, so when we're not getting rain, when we're in dry weather, it gives us an indication of dry weather flows. And there's, there's a bunch of dots and I recognize they're not that great to see, but they're indicating, let me grab it. Well, they're just indicating depth, how deep the main is all along based on the dot along the way. So for example, the colors and you can't see them well, they're mostly all in the dark, they're almost all black. Almost all of them in dry weather flow are black because that's the pipe capacity utilization, zero to a hundred and twenty percent. That's where those lines at the top, so it goes zero to one twenty, one twenty to two hundred and two hundred percent. Now in dry weather, we don't have capacity issues. We're in pretty good shape. And so it's always in that wet weather flows, but this gives us that data now, so we can monitor improvements on the system. Uh, this was another interesting chart that Albert did. So this is looking specifically at storm and it looks at system surcharges and what parts of the community are impacted when the system hits capacity. So what, as you start, here's extra foods. Here is Main Street, the concrete plant. So if you have your bearings a bit there, the gas company.
Oh, this is just a small area.
Pardon me, Counselor?
This isn't, this isn't the whole, this is just a smaller area.
This is just a small chunk, just to show when they looked at storm water piece. So we have a storm outfall here, we have another one that's in here somewhere. And then again, the text is small, but he's showing on the map where it surcharges. And you, you guys have probably all seen those manholes back up, or storm drains back up when we've had heavy rains. Cause we, we just have some issues. The short story on the storm system, why we have a bit of a challenge is, some of you may recall, I don't, but back in the eighties, I believe, they dredged the creek.
Yes, I do.
They dug the creek out to a certain level.
Watched that.
Yeah, Counselor Creed would have sat up in his house there and watched that happen. Shortly after the creek was dredged, they put in all the storm outfall lines.
Right.
And they put the exit points all down the creek. Well, over the last thirty years, guess what's happened to the depth of the creek relative to those outfalls? It's much higher now, it's filled in. And so when we get high water, the water goes higher than the outfall structure of the storm drains. And it greatly restricts the flow. And so that's a problem. And you have like down at John Bright's and down by Kirk's Tire, you always have storm backup because that's the manhole and it can't get out in the creek anymore. And so it shoots up out of the manhole and floods the, the street. So Albert took a look at flows and what the impact is and actually we'll get to a recommendation that we've just sent in for a grant application, but you guys don't know about it yet, but I'll, I'll explain all that shortly. He's recommending that right here, there is a de-watering pump station and right here. So what he's saying is, and in fact, many of you will recognize, down in front of John Bright's house, John and the Nets, when we have a massive storm event, we take one of our big trash pumps, we drop it in the manhole and we pump the water over land downstream. Because the outfall can't get rid of it. So Albert has recommended two stations that are under the road with an automatic pump that's permanently mounted there that when the flow kicks in, it starts pumping over land to not let the storm system back up. Because once it backs up, it quickly goes all the way up. It starts to back up all the way uptown. So one of the recommendations that came out of this was two de-watering pump stations that were permanently installed and had permanent pump installation. Now the resiliency grant has another, I think, six or seven years left in it and they have suggested this is a good fit for that grant, which pays ninety percent. And the deadline was last Friday, so we got the application in, too sweet. So we'll, we'll talk about that at budget time again too with the new council, but we had to hit their deadlines. So we put two applications in and I'll, I'll touch on the other one as well. So that's, again, just this analysis of the storm. If you take a more macro look at this, and I didn't put the map in, but Albert also placed a number of potential future stormwater ponds. Because what happens is we go headlong into development and we don't keep land allocated for stormwater management ponds. So now on the south side, if you go all that curl land up above Atkins, all down the south, there's one in there. There's one down behind the reunion center, actually. There's the one that we purchased the land over by Ryan Jensen. So he's kind of overlaid those and said, this makes the most sense based on your topography and natural drainage courses. So if you can do something about that land to protect it or secure it or establish it as MR or something, then look at that. So this is just a small shot of the storm analysis.
MR land allows us to do that?
Oh, yeah, I think so.
That's all this.
Yeah, I think so. Um, this one, we did something new this year. We, we always do annual sidewalk inspections. So our guys walk and make notes of areas. We implemented a little more technology this year and did wheelchair ramp, sidewalk and road condition assessment. And we overlaid it on maps. So what you're seeing here is the green dots are places where there are wheelchair ramps in good condition. Uh, there's yellow squares, which means that there isn't, no, they are wheelchair ramps in poor condition and the triangles are where there are no ramps. So we were able to overlay that, in fact, there's actually a really cool overlay on Google Maps where you can go look at the ramp or the lack thereof. You can zoom in and look at.
Wraps there, it really hit it.
Yeah.
But it appears there's quite a bit of need maybe on the east side. So it's a greater concentration.
The main areas seem to be, you know, our main routes are doing okay, but of course, there's always, I want to make sure I told you that key right. So green is good condition wheelchair ramp, yellow, sorry, I'm going to take, yeah, I said that right. Yellow is a poor condition ramp and the triangle is no wheelchair ramp. So now we have these assessments we can overlay on the maps, which is great. And start to look from a real bird's eye view, literal bird's eye view of where those are needed and where we're lacking. So that was a neat thing. What happened is we had two, two guys go up and down every street with a, with a phone and they could tap at every location and put a description of the issue and then overlay it. So the other thing we were able to do, and I, I don't have, I wanted to get the Google Maps overlay, but I don't have it, is we did this, I'll come back to that other chart. So we had the same thing for the roads. And actually there's, when they went up and down every road, and I don't, I didn't put this in there because it's a lot. From page two to page on this one, two to page eighteen is just locations of roads where there is need for an improvement. Now some of it's very minor, like there's a crack in the asphalt, right, so no big deal. But the guys went through and indicated every spot. And then what we did is we prioritized them in two different ways. So we have an item, what's the issue? So for, in this case, we have asphalt that has a, has transverse cracking. The price is about a hundred and twenty dollars a meter to fix. We identified eighty one meters of it. So that's ninety seven hundred and twenty dollars to fix all of that if we chose to focus on that. Now that's a pretty low priority issue in many ways. We do a lot of crack filling every year. But you can get into say asphalt deterioration, so just aged asphalt. Nineteen hundred dollars a meter, we have nine hundred and seventy three meters, that happens to have a ticket of one point eight five million. So that's a little more. Um, wheelchair ramps, like we talked about, they're identified here, fifteen hundred dollars apiece. We need sixty nine of them new, we need eleven repaired, so you're about a hundred and twenty thousand dollars for that.
What do we set aside to do each year? Like, do we have?
It varies.
Number that we try to do?
It varies. Um, I think for general, for sidewalks, if I just speak to that, I think we have thirty thousand?
Thirty two thousand, I think.
About thirty grand, give or take a year, which would include new wheelchair ramps, which we've been doing a lot of lately. New wheelchair ramps, repairs, grinding down, all that kind of stuff in a year. Um, and then we have about forty, about, oh man, I should have brought the, fifteen thousand for crack filling and thirty to forty thousand for road material repair stuff. Now that's on top of say replacing all of Second Avenue.
Yeah.
And all that other stuff. Like this year, we did sixty thousand dollars in just miscellaneous paving upgrades. So they weren't assigned to a capital project. The asphalt had just deteriorated to a point it needed to come out and be replaced. But the underground infrastructure was still sound, so we didn't need to dig it up.
Counselor Baker? Jeff, with our wheelchair ramps in mind and the replacement of, and repairs, we had a private citizen on Second Avenue that took on building a wheelchair ramp. You're aware of that.
Building a ramp?
You mean off the curb, just a little roofed structure?
It was on Second Avenue and about sixth or seventh street, right on the corner.
Okay.
Mc, uh, McMurray?
Was there a hole for the gutter?
And he did a whole new ramp right there on.
Like, was it concrete or?
Yeah, it's all concrete. And I was just wondering if that, if there was any concessions to him for doing that.
I, I, I don't know. I'm not sure, I'd have to maybe ask Brandon, I'm not familiar with it at all.
It's Doug Murray.
Yeah, that would have been a while back.
Scott.
Scott Murray, yeah. When his wife was.
Hole for beaches.
Yeah.
Yeah, no, I'm just not familiar.
I don't know. Would you, would you check on that for me?
Were you looking to compensate him for that?
No, I'm just wondering, I'm just wondering if it was done up to par and stuff.
Oh, okay.
All that kind of stuff.
Okay. But this is a great little work thing for us on the, on the roads, Counselor Peabody?
Yeah, so my question for the plan, this is a great plan, love and everything.
Yeah.
Um, is it detailed enough to show like which one needs the attention next?
So that's going to be our discretion.
And when you say our, you mean?
Yeah, and councils too, right? If you're getting a lot of complaints about a certain area, you're hearing something, of course, we have that discretion. I will show you in just one more slide how we tried to prioritize everything.
Yeah.
And it's, it's a scary spreadsheet. But we also rated and looked at everything by, okay, instead of looking at item, what if we looked at how many minor defects, major defects, things that are a risk of failure, failure potential, safety hazard, failure, it has failed and is a safety hazard. Now we went and looked at some of these after Albert's guys went through and don't necessarily agree with how they rated it. Again, these guys don't have the context necessarily and that's where it leaves our discretion, right? So some of them we recognize. I can tell you that Seventh Avenue off of Main Street, the asphalt's in poor condition. I, I know it's in the failure mode, but we want to replace the water and sewer under it before we repay it. So we know that, we know Sixth Street West from first to second is in really poor condition for the asphalt. So there's context around all this, right? But we also know that Sixth Street's slated next year to start the water and sewer, or two years from now to start water and sewer replacement. Cause it's cast iron. So there's context to everything. So we'll, we'll look at these and then say, yeah, okay, these are things that definitely we need to get on the budget. So we were just able to do it by rating a little bit and put dollars to it, Counselor.
How much of this work up here is stuff that we can apply for grants for? Is this all, does this come from MSI funding or?
That's, so depending on the nature of the work, so the water and sewer stuff, we usually use MSI for sure. The roads, not fully, but a lot of it is a federal gas tax fund.
Okay.
Which we'll get a lot of that, again, not, not all. And as we all know, MSI is agreed through, through next year again and that's it. We're going to be in that weird limbo for MSI again.
Yeah.
But yeah, absolutely. Infrastructure of any kind within this report is, almost all of it would be MSI eligible. I mean, you have good discretion over MSI. But also federal gas tax covers a lot of our road stuff. But even, I sent it to you actually, Counselor. I think I sent you something that our sewer line, for example, this year was funded by utility reserves. Our utility reserve that we'd set up. So it's a combination of all, it's a bit of a combination. And, you know, we wanted those utility reserves in the eventuality that MSI went away. You really have no option for capital infrastructure.
And the problem is for council, it's always how much you put in a reserve.
Yeah.
But for us, we put a little bit more because we have a feeling that MSI is not going to be there forever. And if we don't start to plan today saving money, when MSI is cut up, what happens to our projects and to all our infrastructure? It becomes a problem.
Yeah, and that, that was going to be my next question in that regard. If MSI goes away, is this going to put the pressure on us to increase taxes a little bit also?
No question.
Absolutely, that's what.
It's eight hundred and eighty thousand dollars a year, you don't get anymore and you only take in two point four million in taxes.
Yeah. That's considerable.
No question.
It means you would do less every year and you do according to what you have in your, in your bank account.
Well, to, to be frank, and then there's a couple of questions. You had a trajectory over your four years where you saw your accumulated, where you saw your assets go up.
Right.
While debt went down and while taxes stayed level. You could not duplicate that outside of a heavy grant environment.
No, no.
You couldn't. If you want to continue and do eight hundred thousand dollars worth of capital infrastructure here, you're going to borrow for it. You simply are. So yes, you need to be prepared for that. You couldn't continue on that trajectory.
This is why it's so important that taxes, taxes reflect on it, but that reserve.
And I'm almost done here, Counselor, and then Jeremy can go.
Yeah, just, just like you're, Jeremy, we're finishing a master plan thing here and then we'll do it. Yeah, Counselor Evans?
I noticed in a lot of areas of town where the grass is taking over the sidewalk as much as six or eight inches in some places.
Yeah.
Now whose responsibility is that to trim that?
Yeah, it's, it's the property owners, yeah.
We should maybe send out some notice because some of it's quite bad.
Yeah.
And then the other problem is we've got people that dump all the grass clippings in the, in the gutters and it floods as well.
I know, that's a big problem.
So maybe we need to remind people about that.
Quite nice the leaves that fell even around the corner from the courthouse.
And we, you have to anticipate some of that, especially leaves.
A lot of leaves on the road.
Totally inevitable.
Counselor? Jeff, how do we determine when a road needs to be cut down and, and the surface replaced? An example is past the east state center, right in front of the east state center. That is a wild wicked road, full of potholes and.
Do you, do you hide them?
No, no.
East.
Right by the east.
Is that Second Go, is that your street?
Yeah.
And, and another one is we put a new road down Second Street or, or Third Street East. And then we had to come in afterwards and put in new services. So you go down that street and.
Are you talking of First? Like Gary Moore?
Yeah.
Yeah. Or Second, sorry?
It's in Second.
No, it's First, that's First Street East, First Street East, yeah, from seventh to ninth.
What determines when we repair that? And my, my situation was if they got paved over, isn't there some liability to the, to the, to the contractor? To make sure that they don't have speed bumps on every property.
There was a nice one right there at the United Church there for a while till they took that up last year.
There was, there was a lot on Seventh Street, but they.
I believe both, everybody was really having a great time going over that one.
Yeah, First Street needs ground down, for sure.
Yeah. So like I said, and that First Street that goes past the east state center, the front of the east state center, that is a deplorable situation. How do we determine?
Use councils.
The priorities.
Budget, we'll propose and if you don't like it, you change it. Right, that's, that's how it works. We're going to break now. We're going to break now. If I come to you and you say, Jeff, I want Second Street East in front of the mayor's and all the way down, done this year, no questions asked, I'm going to push back and say, look, we got some utilities to deal with under there, and we're going to be digging up good asphalt in three years if we do it now.
Yeah.
Now, that, that's going to be the pushback from my, my situation.
You, you have to find the happy medium where you balance the repairs with the long-term projects that are coming up.
Oh, yeah. So that's why Seventh is strung out and Sixth is hung out too long. Those aren't good roads. Totally agree. It's just that they're going to be completely dug up here in the next couple of years.
So you've got to have a patching agenda for those.
But they do. They patch that piece that you said about three times this year. Unfortunately, it just does not stick, for whatever reason, it doesn't.
We've run into, the last few years with Brandon going through this, we've run into a lot of poor road base. So you take the cul-de-sac on Three A Avenue--
Right.
When we pulled that asphalt out, it was just sitting on black dirt. Like, there was no roadbed, there was no gravel, there was no pit run, there was just, they just said, this is a great place to pave, here we go. And so we are finding that we're getting premature deterioration of some roads, because for one reason or another, fifty years ago, four years ago, I don't know. They chose to make it cheap by not putting a base under it.
Poor workmanship.
And so you pay for it.
Paying our--
Yeah. So that's been a bit of an issue. But anyway, the point is, we've got this really neat way to look at, you know, if, if the new council, for example, said, look, we want every wheelchair ramp fixed or done next year, okay? You've got to find a hundred and twenty grand. So we know quite readily what that looks like.
And it all depends on the philosophy and vision of the next council, too. If next council say, we absolutely want to make it senior friendly and, and market ourselves as such, well, then that becomes a priority.
But, you know, you can also take a percentage and say, we've come a long way.
That's like eighty percent.
I know, it's a huge percentage.
It's unbelievable.
It's a huge percentage.
Raisin with wheat.
Well, they don't have sidewalks, so they certainly wouldn't, they don't need ramps because of sidewalks. That's another story.
They're about to do this.
Yeah, you need sidewalks before you worry about ramps. You're going to get there first.
But it follows what we decided as council this past term, where we said we wanted to make it more senior friendly.
Have you been doing--
And more friendly for those who are never mind just seniors, but those who have less mobility. And so that's what we had decided, so that reflects it.
Yeah, we've been doing about a dozen ramps a year since this term. It's been at least twelve to fifteen a year, I think.
So something that might put that in perspective would be, go back four years, show that one. I mean, we can't--
Right, right.
And then show this one.
You could overlay.
This is where we've come.
I mean, those were priorities we don't speak of.
Right.
But administration listened and did something about it.
I recall a gentleman who, many times Lloyd would ask him to get on the sidewalk and off the roads, and he's, his excuse was always, well, there's nowhere for me to exit. There were no ramps for him.
And, and it was a--
And he was on the road, and I come upon him as he had an accident on the road. You know, and it wasn't a good situation, and so there's liability there, too. You've got to be careful. You have to prioritize, prioritize the areas that you put them in and make sure that, you know, that they are there.
But we've also tried to follow, like with Second Avenue, we've just followed that construction. That's the reasonable time to do--
Yeah, that's been great.
Because you're already tearing up, you've got equipment there, you've got people mobilized, so it makes sense. So that's a small priority. This is, this is one page of what the large priority spreadsheet looks like, and I know there's a lot there.
Can I have a pair of glasses?
Yeah. It doesn't matter, and I hope not. So basically, all this is saying is, for example, Ninth Street West and Fourth Avenue to--
Eight Street?
Eighth Street and Fourth Avenue. What is it? Well, it's a water main to go to two hundred millimeter. It's ninety-four meters, and it goes through and gives why. Is it a capacity issue or is it a deterioration issue? So we coded it in here. There's a code A, B, C, and D. To give a quick glance of what?
I'm just amazed at those young eyes, because--
Yeah, I was.
I'm this much closer and I can't see it.
It's an advertisement for the good folks at LASIK.
I had LASIK.
Yeah. I'm starting to notice it's not what it was ten years ago, because I'm squinting here. So then it puts it in dollars, and then what we did is, we actually, this actually, this was just getting finished on Friday. This spreadsheet's not completely done. We don't have anything in the next three years, because we wanted to integrate the, the capital budget of council as best we can, so we're just going to fill this out near the end of the year and then go forward. And then we simply tried to prioritize and put them in the respective years after that. And so we've got costs today. We'll extrapolate the costs going forward. And we tried to give Albert and his group some dollars to key around. So we said, it sounds great to put everything in twenty nineteen, but it's not reasonable. So in water infrastructure, keep it around, you know, a hundred and ninety thousand. For sewer infrastructure, a hundred and fifty thousand.
Right.
And so on. In road infrastructure, eighty thousand. And we kind of went down that way and said, here's some numbers to key around, so you don't have this unreasonable amount per year.
Yeah.
Or it's just simply not going to happen. Otherwise, we're off track in year one, because you thought we should spend three point five million.
And you're going to have four hundred.
Yeah, it's not going to happen. So that's why you see a group like that, is it's going down essentially in dollar chunks per year, based on priority. And we will be massaging this priority, there's no doubt, because there's just so much there. And things are going to come up, and priorities are going to come up, or politically, you're going to want to do something before something else, and we're just going to work with it. That's how it's going to work.
Jeff, this is going to be a real, a real situation with the MSI funding and some of these grants being taken down to be able to do a chart like this and, you know, projecting costs and, and payment.
That's about it.
But my question was, when we do a strip road like Second Avenue we just finished--
Yeah.
Who's responsible to bring the manhole covers up to finished height?
Good question.
That way, when the payers come in, when the payers come in, we don't have a hole around the manhole.
I assume we do, and we know the finished elevations, but--
Right on.
Yeah, it's not a part I've, I've ever dealt with, but I assume it's us.
Thing is, you know, sometimes we've done those repaving and we have an actual pothole where the manhole cover is, because it hasn't come up to--
I haven't seen that on Second.
No, no.
Okay.
But I've seen it on other roads, you know, and I'm just wondering whose responsibility is.
I would assume we get it to finished elevation, yeah.
Right.
So anyway, that's a very brief, like I said, you saw ten slides of this little monster. So the point is, is that it's been a little too long coming. Albert and I have had some good, he bought me lunch over that. I did make it totally better, but it helped. But it's a great document, and it's actually enhanced from what we did in, in '09, because we've been able to model flows over that time. So we have this really good historic information to say, here's what's happening to this line in a wet weather flow. So I mentioned to you the stormwater upgrade with the pumps and those de-watering stations. The other one that'll be coming up on the budget for those returning or those interested after the fact is, we put in a grant to twin the line that goes from the end of the trunk main. So you folks will remember, we twinned the trunk down each, so we always went on the east side of the creek, and then we twinned it and brought one down the west side of the creek. They go, then we went down, past the pool, behind the fire hall, all the way past southwest concrete and past Chief Mountain Gas. That was a huge project we did.
I remember.
And we stopped down past the gas coag. What we're proposing, and Albert is proposing in the plan on the sanitary sewer, is that there's only one line that goes under the creek and up to the lift station, that we twin that. And it's for two reasons. One is, there's not capacity in high flows, and so it's a point of bottleneck. And two, we've been able, again, technology advances and we get more neat toys, we've cambered that line and it's filling with sediment.
Yeah.
Because it's a syphon, it's a scoop, right? So it's slowly filling with sediment, and it doesn't have the capacity that it did when it was built. So we're losing capacity.
Is there any way to blast that out of there?
Well, not, yes, but we need it, we need to twin one, because we have to be able to shut it down. Unless you can tell everyone to not flush for the next few hours, we can't do anything, because it's always going. It brings everything from all this side of town to one spot and to the lift station. So if we twin that, it gives us capacity in high-flow events, and it also gives us the opportunity to take one side out of service in dry weather events, and then we can maintain the other side.
That's a major expense, too.
It's six hundred and forty thousand bucks, if I recall.
Right.
So we've put that resiliency grant in as well.
What, what's the, the percentage?
Ninety percent. Ninety percent. And so resiliency has a timeframe on it. It only goes for X amount of years, and so we're really trying to capitalize on anything that could fall under resiliency, because these are needed projects. And the fact is, when we did it, when you have a document like this, it supports your grants very well. It's a really good document to support your grants, where we say, look, we did a complete infrastructure master plan, this was identified as a high priority in sanitary sewer, for example. It goes a long way for, for supporting them.
Tangible capital is great, too.
Fifty grand?
Money well spent.
Well, it's, it's a great document, yeah.
It's a required document.
Yeah, do we have, I don't know if it is just yet.
Okay.
But it, yeah, sorry.
Can I, can I ask you, is that something that is redone every ten, fifteen years?
So I'd like to see it about every five.
So a revision every five years?
Yeah.
This was a total redone?
Well, one of the, one of the issues is, we changed engineering firms that did it, and so there was a bit of start from scratch, and the other thing is, we started with so much different and new data.
Right.
Right? So what can happen now, Albert puts all this in a model, and as we do upgrades every year, he can simply amend the model.
Okay, all right.
And so when it's time to do new fire flows, and when it's time to do new, all, all that stuff--
He'll have--
We already have a baseline for everything, right?
Quickly.
So--
Thanks.
Yeah, anyway, I just wanted to give you a bit of update there. It's, it's been a big project. The road thing was added to this, which was great, and it's part of that whole master plan Council wanted to see put together by the end of the term, so it's good.
Well, it was something we heard about seven years ago.
Yeah.
It's coming. I'm glad we finally have the goods.
Yeah.
All the other departments of that master plan assist is, is unbelievable. When you, when you start tacking it all together, tangible capital assets, you know, the management of that, that master plan would be unbelievable.
And it gives you your replacement costs and, you know, all that stuff.
Exactly.
It's good.
It's easy--
The TCA was really the bedrock for doing the modeling on here, right? Because you knew every node of every type of material thickness--
Yeah.
All, all the stuff. So it built the model, right? And even in '09, we didn't have those, that information to model. We've just got so much more information now. It's been good.
So just one, one thought from me, Jeff, on that, is, you know, maybe a recommendation for, for the new council when they come on board, is to be able to show them kind of the pace that we've been at with some of this, and then the pace we need to be at. And if it's significant, you know, like if you say, you know, we've been doing great, but we need to double it if we're going to catch up to this schedule, that, that'd be pretty good for a new council to know.
Sure.
Right? Or, or if they're saying, hey, we've been doing really good, and we could be in a lot worse shape, which of course we know, and, and all we need to do is keep doing what we've been doing, and then, that, that's great news, too. So just kind of a little perspective as to what we've been doing and where we need to be--
Sure.
And that contrast for the new council would be my suggestion.
Yeah, bringing you returning, some of this will be very redundant, because this is an integral piece to go over with the new council. So--
Jeff, I don't, I don't call it redundant, because it's, it's a learning process. New counselors, I'll tell you, it's, it's going to be swamping--
Yeah.
Situation.
And there's a lot coming out. Counselor Barnes?
Jeff, in this, in this study here that was done, have you factored in the, the twenty-year period of replacement of the sewer plant or the water treatment plant and those, that money that goes in, is that something separate or--
It is not budgeting, let's call it, amortization would be the right word, it is not budgeting a reserve for those plants. So that's going to have to be dealt with--
Yeah.
Specifically on the side, yes. So it is anticipating upgrades to extend life, and it is not predicting the end of life for either one. In fact, in both, if you get into the, the text piece of the water and sewer, Albert's anticipating there's actually quite a bit of life in both with some key improvements. That the technology's still sound, the treatment is still sound, and with some key improvements, we can kind of indefinitely move the life forward on, on the plant.
My secondary question on that was, when we consider the possibility of Levitt Mountain View coming on, the water line, and Etna coming on--
Etna possibility is going to be--
Is that going to, those costs will be, have to be factored in by those areas, by the county that they're going to--
It's my anticipation that if infrastructure is required to support their need for water, they're responsible--
They're going to be responsible.
That's my position, that's a political position.
Right.
So I'll be very careful there.
Yeah.
Ultimately, when they come to the table needing that partnership, it'll be at the council of the day to determine how much of that is for our benefit here in the community--
Yeah.
And how much is solely necessitated by the expansion. So it is a bit of a, I, I should have, I should be careful and I should measure my opinion on that.
Well--
But my opinion, you know, is that if we don't, if we don't need it internally, then they need to at least be bearing the bulk of the costs.
So I guess what I was thinking was on the shared services agreement that's coming down the pipeline--
Yeah.
They're going to be married to that, sometimes down the road. They may or not, may not be liking the idea, but they're going to be regardless by two nineteen. They may or not, may not be liking the idea, but they're going to be regardless by 2019. And so, those are things we have to consider.
Yep. And we'll be able to show those needs twenty years down the road. You know what the infrastructure needs are for the plant, so. Yeah, it'll be good for that discussion.
Thank you.
Okay? Thank you. That was very informative and we appreciate that effort. Maybe send our thanks to the people that worked on it, that they finally got it done just in time for a new council, so that's good.
I thought that's what the check told him.
Yeah, yeah, that's right, yeah, absolutely. And the lunch for you, that was a nice touch, a nice apology. Good, well then we'll turn time back to our delegation, Mr. Jeremy Preet is here to talk about his Epic Youth Center. And the services that will be provided through there. We oddly don't have our podiums set out, so.
I thought this was maybe the stand for the chair.
Do you take my chair right there?
You can. No, 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 I'm not, I'm not that big of a guy.
You can even just sit there. Or do you want a microphone closer?
Come near the mic.
Yeah, move up closer to the microphone and tell the room who's listening.
Citizens of Kirkston.
Hey, it's where I'm late, by the way. It was nice of you guys to rearrange your whole schedule.
No problem.
For me. A lot to do, I know, it was a hard thing. Hey, thanks to the counselors too, you guys have a boring job, my goodness.
Boring.
That was wicked.
That was exciting.
That was the best we've had all year.
I'm glad Jeff reads that stuff. I'm glad you guys are on council and thank you for your service, the ones who are ending their term here and good luck to you guys that are running again. It's a job that I couldn't do, but anyway, I sent you a request and your last meeting you addressed a little bit. I think I probably did myself a disservice by not giving more of a preamble or a packet and I'm hoping that you have something on your screens in front of you.
I should mention, I uploaded just ten minutes before the meeting what he's going to be talking to a little bit.
Updated.
You have a 7G that says epic, what did you call that file? It was like epic intro, something. I only uploaded just before.
Do you want to read that? I don't want to read anything, I've presented so many times already. But I just think that for your benefit to have it in front of you is a good thing. There's people in town that write all the time on Facebook world, the things they wish the town would do. And the services they wish the town would offer and pools with roofs and new football fields and all that stuff. And I'm sure you get inundated with requests and that's not my intent. My intent and my wife's intent has always been to be doers of the things that we want to have done. And so, I don't come to town council requesting or trying to throw some idea on you. This is something that is happening already and we've taken the bull by the horns, we've put our own capital down to do this. So, Sarah and I have purchased a building on Main Street for your interest, it's Art Henninger's shop, it used to be Hummer Tidy Shop. Before that, it used to be an MD Building. The front has had a plethora of different looks to it as well, gift shops and electronics and whatnot in there. So, we purchased the entire thing, it's thirty-four hundred square feet and we're going to be opening a youth center. Our name is already registered with the CRA as a nonprofitable and it's called Epic Youth Services. We've already presented to FCSS and had approved our funding for 2017. And we take possession, Art's going to have one more garage sale this weekend and turn the keys over to us because of his heart attack. He's going to leave a lot of junk that I get to haul to the dump. And I'm totally grateful with it because it gets me in there five days earlier. But Sarah and I, we are spending sixty thousand dollars on a renovation to the building. We're going to give it a great facelift, it's going to be a beautiful building, I think it's at the center of Main Street, like we just, we love the location. Particularly with our demographic being alternate school, high school, junior high school. We want to be where the kids are, which is, you know, eating greasy cheeseburgers at ANW and frozen treats at Dairy Queen. And crossing back and forth on their way to home and football and whatnot. So, my degree is in clinical counseling and I've been on several boards and I've coached sports in this town for twenty years, so. I, those are my people. I love you people, but I like younger people more. So, I really relate to youth and I want to be down there. We've amassed about thirty-four mentors and volunteers, former schoolteachers and current schoolteachers. Our programming is geared towards after school, obviously, until about seven o'clock for most of our daytime programming. And that's barrier free, kids aren't going to pay a penny of it. Our partners are significant partners beyond FCSS, we've partnered Bridges of Hope in Lethbridge, Youth One in Lethbridge. Bridges of Hope, incidentally, has six youth centers that they oversee. And so, they're no stranger to the game. We have our policies in place, we've formed alliances with Westman School Division, Curgitry. I had a great conversation with Corey back there and about half a dozen other minor sponsors. Bridges of Hope offers us liability insurance, they do our accounting for us, they have a professional grant writer. And they take care of all our legal for our policies as well. So, this is not a ground floor idea at all, we are hoping to launch if contractors fall in line by November fifteenth. So, we're not far off, but of course, that has everything to do with some weather and some concrete work and stucco stuff outside. So, I have in my possession on my computer at home, a document of about a hundred and fourteen capital expense items that we need to get. Some of them are from microphone size all the way up to a school bus. And then, there's also phase two and three and three thousand moving down the road. We're trying to offer a service that the town is going to be proud of, that's going to build some community connections and not put a burden on the town. A service that you don't have to pay for, how do you like that? I think you do, by the noses going up and down, I think that means you like it. Yeah, we're fully staffed and ready to go November fifteenth is our goal. With that list of things from microphone all the way to school bus, I just picked one of the things that I hadn't had a partner for yet. We've had people say, I'd love to donate a piano, I'd love to donate drums, love to give some snowboards to you, I'd love to do these different things for the youth center because we love the idea. Something in town for kids to do, it's a novel idea, but people are jumping on board. So, I had picked a camera. And Corey says he's got stuff and he's happy to help me out, but that was the request that I gave. I could have picked number thirty-six or number sixty-one or any of those items. Not because I want to burden the town, just because I'm trying to form partnerships and that capital isn't something that I want FCSS to pay for. I want them to pay for the kids' programming, so. If I can find somebody to donate a sectional couch and a piano and a camera, then that's what I want to do, so. If the town wants to get on board and participate and partner in piece of furniture, electronics, then I'm happy to take that. But I really want the town to be proud of this. And the thing that I picked to put the town's name on as a donation, just incidentally, it's a program called My Story. It's running Chicago and LA, it's an inner-city type program to connect kids, they're very well connected to this online community. But they're not connected to their own community. And so, that program takes kids in a supervised role and they interview some of the homeless people, of course, there's waivers and things like that in place. But they interview them, they have a set list of questions on camera. The kids take that document and that experience and it's a powerful thing for them. But they're also getting some tools beyond just the connection, they're going to go back and they're going to edit that. They're going to broadcast that on a local city, Channel thirty-two is happy to help us with that as well. But they're going to be face to face, instead of the Kahoon Corner problem, well now they're going to meet Tom. They're going to ask Tom, you know, where are you from, what was your childhood like? Well, he, I know these things because I've asked him, he used to sled down the hill and he used to be the fencing champion and the rodeo champion, but the kids don't know this. All they see is the addictions and the outward, but they don't see the inward. And so, that was what I asked the town to help sponsor that program because putting your name beside that program, I think, does great things. Not only for public image, but for the community unity that you've probably been battling the entire term.
I think it's a, it's a great idea. I like the idea to put a face on people that we feel are most often viewed as a problem in our town. They're human beings, they have a name, we should know their story.
My story, I think it's a great name for it too, so I'm really excited for it. It's not going to be a 2017 project, it's a 2018 project for us as well, but yeah, I'm really excited for it.
So, when you said that the town is sponsoring it, are you saying that FCSS is sponsoring that program in particular? Is that the way the town is sponsoring or is that the way we can sponsor beyond and above what you're getting?
I know your question, so FCSS has sponsored much of our programs and I've already applied for some of the other programs that we're doing, some of the day camps and stuff for 2018. This one I hadn't asked FCSS for, there's some things that we're just going to be able to hopefully find some people to donate a camera and a little bit of money for some computer equipment and some broadcasting expertise from people that know what they're doing and.
Not mentioning any names, right Corey?
As a follow-up question, you were looking for a camp quarter or something of that sorts, about fifteen hundred dollars or so. If that is something that you're going to obtain through other means, how can we help you? Is that a donation that can help you towards the program? Would that be an equivalent donation kind of? Is that?
Yeah.
Give me an idea of what it is that you're looking for.
At this point, in order for all these programs to run, I either need the money to implement them or the actual item. So, some things, we've got a storage locker that the Shafers have been letting us use and it's three-quarters full already, full of stuff for the center. So, with that program there, yeah, if we have a community member that's willing to donate the camera, well then, the next thing is we're going to need a new electrical for the room and a green screen and networking cables and whatever, so. There is going to be expenses associated with it, but it's going to be a one-time thing and then, once we're running, it should be very minimal.
Okay, so, if you don't mind.
No.
So, as a follow-up question then, if you were looking for fifteen hundred dollars or so, thirteen hundred, fifteen hundred in that area. If a donation is made, would that be to a particular?
Piece of equipment.
Piece of equipment or whatever, no program, but it might be a general donation that you will see fit, how best to use?
Yeah, I would love, I honestly would love, it's been something I've tried to do in other areas, that linking of communities. And if the town wanted to donate and sponsor My Story, we could ensure that the money went to that program.
Okay.
As far as what part of it, if it's a paper waiver, you know what?
So, in general, it could be sponsoring My Story program? All right, so now I understand where we're going with that.
And we can build that as part of our broadcasting scheme to make sure that the town's name is also affixed to it.
Right.
So, it's not Epic Youth Services, just doing that independently with Channel thirty-two, but the town is on board with it.
Yeah, I understand, thank you for the clarification.
Yeah.
Just a follow-up question there. If there was a donation, we talked about the physical asset of the camera, but if there was a donation amount that could sustain that program annually, My Story. And help with its broadcasting and editing, et cetera, what would that amount be for like an annual continual My Story program?
I really think it's going to be minimal, especially if we have some partnerships, but you know, yeah, I don't know until we get deeper into looking at that.
Like would fifteen hundred dollars annually covered the cost of?
I'm not coming to the town to ask for more, to be honest. If FCSS partnership is going to work with us and some of these other community, I'm not going to be.
This might be a one-time thing or a period of.
Okay, so is.
No, I want that to be ongoing, we formed a youth council and we have all the way from grade six to grade twelve representatives, we have a senior and a junior council. And those kids are kind of like in my leadership program, they come up with ideas, they, the kids loved that idea. Of actually connecting to the community, to some of these people in town that are socially marginalized or on addiction recovery paths or whatever that looks like, they love that program. So, it's not going to be a one-time thing as far as the program goes, I'm just not sure the ongoing expense, what that's going to look like.
Counselor Preet, then Counselor Mary.
Okay, Jeremy, it sounds interesting, exciting. I'm assuming from what you've said that this My Story program isn't something you've invented, but you've looked at other areas that have used a similar program. So, based on what you've read and what you've researched, what kind of an impact or change or effect would you expect that it would have on our homeless people in the community? What might it do for them?
Yeah, for sure, I think a lot of the community connection indicators from the website led to more projects of servitude in the youth. So, not just waiting for this thing to be broadcast, but actually that connection in the community that they wanted to help, they wanted to serve, they wanted to be leaders on things that actually made a difference and a change. So, I think that the benefits aren't just, well, I learned how to broadcast and interview. I actually learned to make a connection to Tom or to Taren or to one of these guys that's down on Main Street. And what that looks like now is, hey, how are you doing? It's funny because I've had a couple of interactions, we had a couple of community picnics that Sarah and I hosted this year. And a lot, most, a lot of the homeless community came down there and we fed them and we talked, we asked them questions, we heard their story. And when I see them now, they know my name and they don't ask me for money anymore. They ask me how my kids are, how's my business? And I ask them how they're doing and there's a connection now because it's a personal thing. Instead of just a face with no name and no story, now it's a story, it's a person, it's a member of your community. And so, the kids in these other instances, and I can't reference one specifically, but it was geared towards these other outreach projects that they did because of the way that they felt from their experience with My Story.
You know, to add to that, the idea, you know the person, it's very interesting. I visited a clinic last week and I was one of those homeless there. And I knew the person's name and I say, hi, named her and say, how are you doing? And I never seen a face light up like a Christmas tree as I saw that moment, how do you know my name? And I thought, wow, it doesn't take much to let a person feel important.
And it isn't that what community is about.
It's about mine.
When I was at the shelter a couple of days ago, incidentally, as an aside, similar to your story. A man was in line for dinner there and he came up and he started shaking my hand, giving me a big like barrel hug, you know. And I couldn't remember him, but he had remembered an interaction that we had had in nineteen ninety-seven. I mean, this is a real connection and to me, I was just thinking, isn't that interesting? And so, we talked and he's got five kids and I heard about his story and that was impactful to me. So, now I won't ever forget his name, I mean, in high school, I can forget a name, but now I won't forget his name and now I can ask him about his kids and it's a different interaction that we're going to have on the street every day because of that.
Jeremy, I have to go along with our Counselor Poy. And thinking it would be easier for you if the council set up a situation where there was an ongoing funding from this council as long as we had a report back, a financial report back each year on what that funding did. And if we created it for this My Story, that'd be great. But if it was needed somewhere else in your program, that would be great also, as long as we knew as a council what was happening with that ongoing funding. It would take a lot of pressure off you also in coming and doing a presentation. You know, we have sat together in FCSS and listened to presentation upon presentation. And for some reason, they all tell us what we want to know, what we want to hear too. But if we had an accounting like Counselor Poy is suggesting, a yearly accounting of what's happening with that funding in place. It would be easier for us to do something like that, I think. Not a bear.
I'm just going to add a few words to this idea. I really think because we are one council away from the end of this council. At this point, what we need to do is decide for the donation regarding My Story, I think that we can do as a recommendation for next council. And afterwards, I would think it would be a new council and let's give them a chance to determine.
I agree.
If you kickstart it in.
And as far as reporting goes, I'm happy to give you a fiscal report, but I'm really hoping you're going to already know because you're watching Channel thirty-two and you're going to see.
Exactly.
You're going to see, posted on Facebook, on Epic Youth Services, this interview, that's so great and then you're like, holy cow, I went to school with that guy, totally know him, you know? And you're going to feel that sense of pride just in the fact that you're helping with this program for our youth to be a part of.
I'm going to be down there.
I really want to thank you for that presentation, it really gives us detail that we were looking for, so thank you so much.
No problem.
Thank you, Jeremy, we appreciate you coming down, any final questions for Ms. Preet related to the Epic Youth Services or just other things in his life?
And thank you for taking the lead on such an important thing, seven years ago I spoke about that idea.
You're welcome.
But you did it.
Counselor.
Yeah, every once in a while, I watch the BYU channel and they have something similar to this on it for older, the older generation. And they go around at random and knock on doors and they ask them about their life and they're, tell us your story. And it's really, really neat when they respond and start telling about how they met their wife and what they do for a living and what their kids and what they're doing, what makes things, etc. And it becomes a really neat story and it pulls the community together and this is something down the road, you know, that might be a possibility as well. I remember when I was working for the newspaper, I used to do a column in the paper called How the West Was Wounded. And I would just go around and I would interview couples that had been here in the community for a long time. And get their story and put their story in the newspaper and it was a thrill and I probably did fifty or sixty of those. And it was really interesting to get to know all these people and I still have people that every once in a while say, do you ever do those stories anymore? They used to read them, you know, they were fun, I've still got all kinds of notes on that, but that might be something down the road that they.
Way back in the day of arranged marriages and stuff.
There you go. I'm not that old. Thanks, Jeremy.
If I got the mic in my face, you'd better be.
Thank you.
You're welcome, thank you very much for your time, I appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right, that brings us to seven D on the agenda, we've got a couple additional committee reports that didn't make it into the last meeting. They're here now and we thought we'd entertain any questions or business arising from those minutes, yes?
Counselor Poy, you are on the waste management.
Yes.
Help me understand what that fine is all about that was generated out of standoff, I would imagine. How much money are we talking about?
A lot.
Because of gravel and sand or whatever else was inside there.
Major fine. It was a major fine, I don't remember the exact amount, but I know it was over ten thousand dollars.
Really?
Yeah, it was maybe even fourteen thousand dollars. Normally, in the business, in the business, the protocol is that the driver is actually responsible for those tickets, the actual driver. Well, in this case, the driver, I mean, that would have broken, that would have broken, he would have had to bankrupt, it was a whole family over that one fine. He could have lost his license anyway, it was a serious thing. And the reality is it wasn't that driver's fault, right? It was the, that transfer station should not have allowed that buildup. No transfer station pickup has ever come close to the weight limit, not even close, we haven't even approached it. We're usually less than half and then that one right there, not only doubled what we normally do, but then again so. And oddly enough, just funny irony, the scales that they used to write that ticket were faulty. So, they actually followed him all the way to our transfer station or our dump and weighed him on our scales and wrote a ticket based on our own scale.
Lovely.
Which was frustrating, but anyway, long story short, the board, and I will say it was unanimous, the board unanimously agreed that it wasn't the fault of that driver. We made, we put a lot of pressure on standoff and we are going to talk to, we're going to legally fight it. And see if we can't get that reduced. to legally fight it, and see if we can't get that reduced, if not dismissed. Because, again, it was a one-time thing. The reality, though, the repercussion is going to be that those officers are going to be sitting there waiting for the next time that's picked up, and they're going to be ticketing our trucks every time they see them from now on.
Of course.
Because the assumption is, we're always overweight. And anyway, so it's very frustrating. But the reality is that that should, we should get that decrease. We think they'll probably just settle for $2,000, be happy, you know, just have to swallow that fee. Again, standoff's making some changes.
This is what I was...
Yeah, making significant changes. And the reality is that that load that we picked up was not the full amount that was in there. We picked up about half of it, we were going to come back and get the other half, and we were overweight with half of it. So what they did, well, maybe I shouldn't say this, because we're being recorded, but the reserve kindly took care of that remaining half and disposed of that themselves, and that did not get added to our total.
Okay.
The other half of that load.
Because, I mean, sand, sand and gravel, come on, give me a break. What is that doing in the waste?
Right. They found a better place for sand and gravel, not in our landfill. So, yeah, and they're going to be, so great question. We were all very concerned, and of course, there's a plan in place to prevent that from happening.
Thank you.
And there's also a new protocol, by the way, also. We created a policy where drivers would then have to reassess and really, you don't want to be picking up a load like that anymore. So they have to scrutinize their loads and make sure that never happens again. So...
Wow.
Yeah, great question. Great question. Any other questions or business arising? If not, then we'll take that as information, move on to seven E, which is the AUMA resolutions. These are the, this is the final list, there won't be any added unless something weird happens. But granted, we take into account, you know, Jeff pointed out, this is of interest to the new council. However, if there's some information or a specific policy in here, or an amendment or something, that this council thought, this leaving council, thought we might want to pass along to the new incoming council, something of interest to us based on the years of experience we've had serving this last term, that we want to bring to the attention of the new council, we thought we'd open up the floor for that. So any thoughts in that regard? We won't be going over each resolution one by one, but probably the new council will be doing that. And so just any thoughts that you had, any concerns, anything we wanted to pass along as wisdom to the next council? Because for any new councillors especially, this will be very new, very new stuff. One actually that I didn't know about until I read it in here was the compensation for council members. Apparently, the tax break that we all get as, you know, for, as public civil, what do you call it, civil officers, that goes away in 2019.
Nineteen.
So, yeah, I wasn't aware. So some, I guess in here, they're saying municipalities will have to bear the potential increase of costs to make that up for councillors, et cetera. So that one's of interest. I don't know why the Canadian government would do that, but yeah.
There is, I don't know if it is in that book of resolution, but AUMA board sent extra resolution to look at, and one of them has to do with when a member of council decides at AUMA to become a member of the executive and is voted in, that that vote will not be enforceable or accepted until the respective council...
Agrees.
Agrees. And the reason being that the council bears the costs per diem and travel, and a lot of things associated with that person serving over there. So I think that's a very wise move.
Yeah, right.
And that is one that I surely would support. The same here. When we want to go anywhere, council decides. It's very difficult to serve on exterior boards unless you have the support of your council, especially because it's a budget item. So I think it was never done, but very wisely done, especially if you have two members, as in Edmonton, for example, that sometimes serves on those boards. It's quite a cost.
All right. The community in respect would pay their meeting times, their...
When you have to serve on a boat, an exterior boat, for example, as when I served on South Grove.
Yeah.
You guys as a council chose to allow me to be on the executive, because there is a cost. And you paid for my cost of going there. So the same story with AUMA.
Councillor Poy?
Yeah, just scrolling down, looking through them, there's one resolution on the state of local emergency. I'm just wondering how that will affect us now. Our bylaw policy is three councillors?
That's the Alberta Emergency Management Act, yes.
Yeah, and I'm gathering from this resolution that they're changing that, the province is changing the protocol on that.
I'll have to look. Well, they're suggesting that they should.
They're suggesting you have to have a resolution of council, which would mean four.
Well, don't worry. The way I read it... To declare a local state of emergency, it's always been that it can be three. Any three councillors can declare a state of emergency.
Yeah. And then, well, that's why it is now. That's kind of why I was curious about...
If I'm reading the VIT result correctly, it's saying that enable the designated officer of the municipality to declare a state of emergency without council.
Well, that's what I'm trying to figure out. So how does that impact this? So they're not changing the...
It would give Jeff the power without us.
Or a delegated committee or something, they're saying. Well, see, we have an emergency, Matty.
But they do not themselves have the authority to declare a state of local emergency.
So you're still...
Still need three councillors.
What is it, three councillors?
It doesn't have to be any of them on that committee. It's the first three I can get.
So that's kind of what you've done in the past, you just called for it.
Yeah, yeah. Started to toss and wind down the list.
So perhaps the question is, what are the political ramifications of removing that check?
Whether this is a good...
Could you have some designated officer just out of the willy-nilly saying, state of emergency, I need your house?
Well, you need a little checks and balances there somewhere, but...
Well, with this, they would remove the check about.
So, yeah, that's, I just wanted to get a feeling, is this a good thing to do this, or is it better...
At the same time, I understand, like, Jeff couldn't get three of us, but he needed to do something. How could he take action? Could he? What could he do? He needs to bulldoze a house right now into the creek.
Yeah.
We need to be there to give him the permission.
Yeah. So.
I'd have to get the environment.
Not an emergency, not an emergency.
Again, for tonight, this goes back to unless you had something, given the context of your tenure, that you wanted to see pushed by the next council, but your next council's going to have to debate these individually.
Yeah.
They'll have to go through them. I just didn't know if there'd be anything where he said, we've been working on that for years, or I've been wanting to, and I want this thing carried.
That would raise my eyebrows.
I just, I mean, we just had one, right? And then we had one a couple of years ago, wondering if that would be a potential issue. I mean, you know, a new council is going to be hypothetical. So, I mean, we've had some experience, so I was just trying to get some ideas of, is the present situation adequate and working, or does it need changing from the council?
This one on emerging of the...
I mean, I've never been called.
That's really be an interesting one.
And one of mine is...
By both bodies.
Right.
Well, I think in our town, the way it happened last year when we had the flooding, and this year when you opened the...
But I didn't have to declare anything there. Like, I don't have to declare all local emergency for a reception center.
Oh, so that was...
But there are ones. Previously, we didn't have that. I had councillor Edmonds, if I recall, and councillor Barfus, and somebody else.
Mayor...
Councillor Van Groot, I think. And at 3:00 AM, we declared a state of local...
That was when we had the flooding.
Yeah, when we had the flood, just some bridges.
Three AM. It was three, wrong. Three AM.
It was about that. Woke you all up.
Essentially, I think that when you have three councillors, because their position is not to be totally involved in the operation, I think it's not a bad number. Essentially, you have to be a voice, you have to be able to make sure that citizens are aware of what's going on. You have more a job of communication and administration as a job of operation. So I think three is pretty good.
Yeah.
Three is working.
Yes.
Any other thoughts then on the AUMA resolution book? If not, we will hand it lightly over to the new council and wish them the best of luck on that. Moving now to seven F, we have the evaluation form for communities in bloom. We thought it would be appropriate for councillor Creed to maybe make any suggestions that council, especially the new council coming on, should be aware of in how to maintain and even improve the score.
Okay. Well, yeah, I hope you all had a chance to read through the recommendations. As Communities in Bloom committee, we find it very valuable to, you know, to go through this and look at things that we can do to improve the community in the next... While typically, Communities in Bloom have chosen to be evaluated every third year, which you need to kind of stay in the loop there with them. You can be friends for a couple of years, and they'd like you to be evaluated every third year. And the judges' comments are really good. The judges that were here made a comment, which I thought was good. They said, don't consider the judges infallible, it's their opinion. So what I would suggest, you know, in looking at the evaluation form, is look at the categories, you know, and the way that we're judged, and make some of your own decisions on, you know, where the, let's see, I'll just scroll down to take a typical, okay, let's just...
Could you go to recycling?
Yeah.
There is something interesting there.
So, well, yeah, okay, I'll go down to environmental action on, so environmental action. So under municipal, they give several areas on which you're judged, you know, programs, policies, programs, guidelines, long-term planning, vision, effective bylaws, et cetera. And then there's, you know, waste reduction to the landfill. So what we might want to look at as, you know, the larger community, as a council, is look at these areas in which we're judged as you're doing your strategic planning and say, okay, what are we doing in this area? What are we doing in this area? Water conservation, is that something that we could improve in our community? And I just think these are very valuable criteria to look at as you're, you know, planning, making your future plans for the community. And, you know, that would be, you know, you can look at the judges' comments and kind of take them for what they're worth, but I think specifically in improving, because these are very good critical areas to look at and say, you know, among these criteria, you know, what work can we improve?
Good. Thank you. Jeff, just want to ask you something regarding the recycling. I know last year we were turned down for the grant that we were trying to improve. Is that something that we are putting forward as trying to seek another grant, or is it something that we're going to have to spend tax dollars?
You have a resolution to consider it in this upcoming budget. You made a resolution to bring forward some costs and considerations for that. So I don't...
At this time, we...
Tax funded right now.
Right. Okay. Thanks. Because there is so much to be done in that area in conjunction with waste management, and I'm thinking that is probably an area where we need to carry on being fairly aggressive.
Thank you for that. We're going to excuse councillor Mars for a couple of minutes, he'll be joining us as we go through. Councillor Creed, were there any other areas that you think council should consider, just in general, or...
I think in general, just look at each, there's six categories there that they key on.
Right.
Some of those categories can be delegated more than others. You know, some things, Communities in Bloom, you know, might be the committee that wants to focus on the municipal aspects. On some of them, maybe the Historical Society might want to be the one that was delegated to, you know, to pursue those. Some things, you know, the town itself might want to consider. So I just present this evaluation as another tool that council can use as we're moving forward, trying to improve the community.
Thank you for that. So, yeah, just listening to your recommendation, it's almost as if we could take a couple of different colored highlighters and say, this is something Communities in Bloom should target, this is something the Historical Society, this is something the town administration, this is, you know, public...
As I could get my ideas to take several copies of this and then highlight, hey, Parks and Rec, you know, these are things that you need to look at, you know, whatever.
Would Communities in Bloom committee consider doing that and coming back with some recommendations?
I'd love to. I'd love to, you know, just highlight the areas and say, you know, this is the Handicapped Association, this is their territory, this is Historical Society, you know, this might be, administration might want to look at these areas. And, yeah, I'd love to go through and just highlight, and then that would make it easier for you to look at and say, I don't have to read through every detail, but these are, you know, the right things.
The ones relevant.
But, you know, all the councillors, when you have your spare time and stuff like that, you look at it and start making some of your own highlights.
We'll put in a new council packet. Here you go. All of the pink highlighted items, read those.
Thank you very much.
Thank you for that report. Any other thoughts or questions from councillors, mayor?
I just want to thank councillor Creed again for having done such a job on that committee for many, many years. My goodness, you've been there for seven years on that committee.
Well, not quite, but about one and a half terms, anyway. Probably half my first term and all of my second term, so, yeah. It's been a good committee.
That's great. That's great. Thank you. All right, moving now to seven G, the business of Epic Youth Services. We would be entertaining any thoughts, motions, councillor, mayor?
I'd make a recommendation that we support the donation or purchase of a 1,300, what's that called? 1,310 and 40 cents for a camera?
Well, if I may, I think he did say that the camera thing might be worked out, but...
It's just a sheer donation.
Just a general donation.
To sponsor that program.
Sponsor the program.
Yeah, well, let's do it that way. I'll make a recommendation to put in $1,500 to sponsor that My Story program.
One time from council?
Yeah.
To come out of the...
Was it for that last week?
You have source of income.
We have some unspent money in the Opportunities Initiative. It's not really by policy a fit, but there's some money there. And we also would have a little bit in our public relations. I think we'll come in under on that, just a touch. Joe might disagree, but I think we're going to be okay on that one.
If I may, every year I've sat on council, we've had a couple of bucks in opportunities left over, right? For things like this. And I wonder if maybe a quick one-line amendment to whatever governs that for things like this, that way, if there's money, if there's money available, council can easily, without having to jump through hoops...
Right.
...redesignate it.
So if you want to be letter of the law about it?
Right.
Opportunities Initiative and donations and that are subcategories of the donations general ledger.
Right.
So it can just come from the general ledger.
Out of general ledger.
Right. You see what I'm saying? There are line items within the GL.
Right.
So it can come out of that GL.
Right.
There you go.
That would be my recommendation.
Fit in wherever is under budget.
The other tricky twist to that opportunity is this, are we locking down three years of opportunity for this? Which in itself is a bad thing.
This is just one year.
Right.
It's a one shot.
So I'm just trying to keep it within the rules of that initiative rule. But no, that's great. Thank you, councillor Van Groot. Any questions or thoughts on that recommendation? If not, we'll go ahead and vote on it all in favor, and no opposed, so thank you for that. All right, that moves us now in the Schedule Two correspondence. We have nine A, a letter from the Tamina Institute informing us of some recognition.
On September 28th.
This, right, thank you.
Good thing we dealt with that.
So be aware of that.
I was actually asked to speak at that, and I declined. It just didn't work, and then there, no, that was when you were asked, I was two weeks before. There was a clean energy summit, and I declined, and then they asked if the mayor would come speak to it, and we were in, oh, Community Foundation Day.
That's right.
Same night. So we declined. So what they were announcing as far as putting us on there is irrelevant to the time, that's just when they were launching it and announcing it, so.
And the clickable map, is that available to all?
Everybody.
So it's there, if anyone has any interest in that, can go and.
You can see where there are programs, I mean, solar program or renewable energy program, so.
That's fantastic.
For the province.
All right, with that, we will entertain perhaps a motion for a short recess, and then we'll need to go away from cameras, so.
I'll make a motion for a 10-minute recess.
Maybe, do we need 10? Do we, maybe five?
Just say a recess.
A recess.
Motion to recess.
Two and a half minutes. Motion to recess, that's fine. All those in favor? And thank you very much.